Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order, the February 4th, 2019. We are being broadcast, but the audio currently is not functioning. So we'll get away for something. They're hoping to be able to get that fixed. But I do want, we've got an agenda tonight. I want to proceed. One of our first orders of business is that the clerk is in Los Angeles. So we need to get a interim clerk. And I'd be ready to accept a nomination for that.
Absolutely. I nominate, let's see. I nominate. I can't. Oh. I would nominate.
Wonderful.
I think we're going for vast experience tonight. Okay. Then I nominate Crystal Ball. I nominate Alice Hoffman.
And I assume Linda, you second that?
Yes, I do.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for the faith and place of me.
The consent agenda. We have town meeting, town account warrant minutes from November the 19th. One day special licenses. The Nature Connection from March 13th from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. 54 Walden Street Wine and Malt and Open Table 329, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. 275 Forest Ridge Road Wine and Malt.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Fred, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now ready for the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town meeting warrant, the blue-covered town meeting warrants was delivered to the post office on Thursday, mailed out to most homes on Saturday. Those of us that live on Main Street didn't get it on Saturday, so I think we're at today. But the first public hearing on the town meeting warrant is next Monday, February 11th of the town manager's budget will be discussed at that time. And it's posted online. Each of us has a copy tonight. It will be back from the printer later this week. So folks who want copies of the budget, if you need to view it online or pick up a copy at the finance department. On Thursday this week, February 7th, at 7:00 PM at the Berkeley Terrace, there will be a discussion of either the Housing Roundtable, discussing housing, a discussion of housing issues that are on, that appear on the town meeting warrant. There's four articles that relate to housing. And that will be the discussion Thursday night, if public is invited. We had a couple of problems in the last few days. There was a release of confidential private information last week in the police department. The police department, on a weekly basis, posts a sanitized log where the names and addresses and phone numbers of people who have interactions with the police are removed and just the events of the week are posted. Unfortunately, the log with full information was posted last Monday around noon time and it stayed up for about 36 hours until a citizen inquired as to why some private information first was ever posted and was promptly taken down after about 36 hours. So that information was exposed to a few folks who checked our website. Police chief has notified everyone whose confidential information was available of the problem and we will be assisting citizens in dealing with credit system situations and that sort of thing. Police chief is apologizing for that problem and will be taking steps to be sure that doesn't happen in the future. And while I'm on difficult topics, there was a power outage last night affecting about 930 customers just about the start of the Super Bowl. The power went out. Staff was able to reroute power to about 400 customers by bypassing the problem on Thoreau Street. But it didn't, they had to de-water and examine five manholes on Thoreau Street before they found that the problem was a faulty connection. It was then repaired once it was discovered, but it was about 11:30, 40 before everybody was back, just about the time.
It was on the radio though, right?
And it was.
Yeah.
So deserved coverage from Channel 5, Channel 4, the NBC. You've got a lot of coverage of the fact that they're recently blacking people out for the Patriots. The planning department is evaluating licensing and permitting software. They're talking with five different firms that will help us have our permitting online so we can apply for all kinds of permits, including permits issued by this board, online. We hope to make a selection of the vendor in the next six weeks or so and begin the process of implementing E-Permitting. Board of Health will be doing some training for food service establishments. There is a new food code regulation that requires all establishments serving food to be fully trained and have a trained person on board while, when inspectors may show up. So it's an added requirement for food service locations.
Is that more for choking, do you know?
I think it's foodborne illness, making sure that.
The norovirus.
That sort of thing, more than for allergies or whatever. Junction Village, as you know, last fall was turned out for the second time for state tax credits to support that 83-unit assisted living project in West Concord. I signed a letter last week supporting the third application for funding. And the town has put up $2.3 million of CPA funds and general fund support for CP.
Which has not been spent.
Which has not been spent, still in our account and won't be unless they get a contribution from the state. We renewed that expression of support for the project. And lastly, Cambridge Turnpike, National Grid is back to work and they will be working on the main gas, the gas line on Cambridge Turnpike from Lexington Road to Mill Brook this week and next. So the road will be quite disturbed.
The release of the police information, I believe there was some tracking that showed kind of the average person who checked in, it was four seconds or something. So do we have any indication that there's been use of improper information?
We don't have any information about any abuse of the information that Mike, as you indicated, we have a head count. There's about 50 or so people, non-town employees, that wouldn't review the material. Viewing of it was brief. And we have no indication that it's been abused, but we have people that are in person.
Human error is the cause?
Yes, that's correct.
So a little extra training or something is necessary?
Yes.
Thank you. My comments, we, January 17th and 18th, Alice, Linda and myself attended the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting. There are many workshops, talks by the governor. We outlined his proposal for the real estate transfer tax that'd be used for funding of initiatives to combat climate change. One focus was the state law changing funding of operating budgets for public schools so that the special education would not fall on each individual community, but be state funding. I don't know if that would get anywhere, but it's certainly something that I would hope people follow up and make sure that our legislatures keep pushing on that because it makes a big difference. That was one of the issues that the school committee had last year. Since our last full board meeting, there've been three public forums on the Town Manager Search. That is going full force. I believe the ad is out already at this point and there'll be applications coming in in the next 30 days or so, which will be reviewed by the town's consultant. That will then get limited to something like 2025, which the Town Manager Search Committee will review and limit those down to a much smaller number, which will be presented to the full select board. For those who do not read the Concord Journal and may not be aware, there was news that Nancy Beakers, is that her?
Yousis.
Yousis. Made a gift of 143 acres of October farm to the Mass Audubon. This land abuts the Concord River and connects with the 80 acres recently acquired by the Town of Concord and the Concord Land Conservation Fund. The donation includes the historic 18th-century October farm Homestead where William Brewster died or then lived. William Brewster was the first president of the Massachusetts Audubon Society and spent much of his life buying land in Concord to protect it from development. It's the largest land donation to the Mass Audubon Society in their 123-year history. It is this type of philanthropy and forward thinking that keeps Concord the town that it is, respectful of all of nature and protecting of its past. And we should be extremely grateful for that gift. The next select board has an abbreviated meeting. We had an abbreviated meeting last Monday as a result of the town caucus. Next Monday, the board's scheduled to meet at 6:30 and will adjourn at 7 o'clock for a public hearing from the finance committee on the town budget. The following Monday's a town holiday due to President's Day. So the next full board meeting will be on Tuesday, the 19th at 7:00 PM. And with that, I think we are ready for the cell tower RFP update. And I see our updater. And even though I don't think we're being broadcast live in terms of audio, if you would identify yourself and speak up.
Yep. I am Kate Hodges, deputy town manager. And I'm just here to give you an update on our telecom sites. The last time we met, we talked about a dual-site approach. Ivan Pagasek, who is our RF engineer, independent RF engineer, was able to visit both of those sites. He presented some maps for coverage. I've had some informal discussions with a couple of the members of the Verizon cell siting team, as well as their legal counsel. They have some interest in two sites, although not as much interest as they had in a single site, which is not unusual and not unforeseen. One of the things that they are worried about is Ivan's RF maps showed a height at the police and fire station of about 60 feet. They believe that that would be totally insufficient and wouldn't be able to get the coverage map and zone that they need to. They don't have, their RF engineers have not looked at the data and have not been able to dig into something like that. It's a bit of putting the cart before the horse. I was interested in knowing what, if anything, should be put in the RFP as far as limitations. The town manager and I discussed it this afternoon. What we've done in the RFP is to say that the height and variables for the telecom facility and the extended electrical cabinets that go to that are at the discretion, but that they have to be acceptable by not only this board, but the town in general. And that's going to be a grading criteria. So clearly, we would give more weight, which it says in the RFP, to a more compact system that's able to deliver what we're looking for. So the specifications, there's six different criteria for grading if we have multiple people who are answering the RFP. And so that accounts for about 20% of the grade. Obviously, financial contribution to the town, financial package, lease terms, and a proven history of success with other municipalities accounts for a lot of the other percentages. But we gave a pretty high weight to how small can you make these, how the least impact that you can have to get the connectivity that we're looking for, particularly in the downtown area. And just to be clear, we're looking for the area from the end of Kaiser Road all the way out to Route 2. My understanding is if they were able to get the right height at both the Kaiser Road and the Walden Street locations, that that would negate the need for anything else at the high school. And so that's where the issue of what goes at 209, 219, Walden, the height matters. And right now, that's down at the bottom of a bit of a gully. And so that was why the BD Center didn't fit the first time that we looked at it. So it's likely that 60 feet in height will not be it, but we're hoping it's not too far off of that. So the RFP is relatively set. I made a couple of new exhibits to attach with that. I gave Andrew pages one through six to send to you all. There's 23 pages in the RFP. Pages seven through 23 are not anything that's in particular to what I just said, but all the things that protect the town, the ability to reject any and all proposals, a sample lease agreement, a sample agreement that has escalators for the payments. So obviously, all of that would be available online when we post it. If I was able to get the information to the central register today by 4:00 PM, so it will be posted next week in the central register. Will run for about 30 days, maybe a little bit less. And we're having the RFP due here in the select board's office on March 22nd at 2:00 PM.
Do you have questions or?
So I have one. Can we or have we talked to Ivan again about the possibility, you know, what it means to, that if a 60-foot tower isn't high enough, what are the impacts of something larger? His analysis was based on a 60-foot height?
No, I haven't been able to reach him. We have a couple of calls into him, so I'm not sure if he's away on business, but we absolutely plan to. If an RFP were to come in and be successful, meaning that we want to enter into some type of lease agreement with whatever company, it's a provisional license agreement. They have to go through all the licensing and permitting for it anyway. But one of the things is that we have to have an outside RF engineer. So whether it be Mr. Pagasek or someone else, that person has to be able to populate the maps and either show that the RF engineers for company X, you know, that those are substantiated evidence or not. And so we'll have another opportunity. I understand, because I wanted to know, where did you come up with this 60 number and why am I hearing this sort of problem? But I haven't been able to get closure on that yet.
And one of the concerns we had was that the historic district commission were sort of concerned about too high.
Yes.
And so the idea of having perhaps a shorter tower was appealing. I think it made our chances of getting approval from them a little bit higher. And that's obviously a concern as well.
Yeah. Well, the unofficial thought was something smaller on the Kaiser Road campus to mirror what was the smokestack that was there a while ago, which is about 80 feet, would be all right because of where it sits in the downtown area, but that the Walden Street site needs to be higher. And they're talking about 100 feet-ish. So that's pretty substantial. It could be possible that we can hide it in the back closer to the tree line. There's a lot of different things that we can do. There's an existing antenna that was on the back of the building. Unfortunately, the roof probably wouldn't be able to support that type of infrastructure, but, you know, we're not saying that we're going to build a 300-foot flagpole or something up front. We'll have to see if it blends in. So the RFP has written that it's got to be somewhere in that campus, but it doesn't necessarily have to be right where the pole is.
But do you also have any questions? Thank you very much for doing that, because I do think it's obviously something of great concern. I will take some public comments if people would come forward and make a statement. Doesn't matter, as long as they're both turned on, you speak into the mic.
My name is Sheldon Hines. I live at 74 The Valley Road in Concord. I am concerned in this RFP about the direction that Verizon in particular is taking for expansion of its technologies that will eventually lead to 5G. These two towers, or poles, what have you, could be the interim technology that Verizon wants. But in their filings to the town of Needham, Massachusetts, indicate that they have much larger ambitions. They have a technology that they call CRAN, and they are intending to introduce it throughout the Commonwealth. It's a stealth antenna technology that is going to be located on utility poles. And it would allow 5G networks to penetrate the entire town once implemented. And these are very low-level. And to achieve the penetration that's needed, the radiation would need to go around and through the houses that are close to the poles. So my main point here is that Verizon, in its filings to the town of Needham, basically said that they have by right the ability to implement these facilities on utility poles. I imagine that in the historic district, that would be probably a bit difficult. But elsewhere, they say that the, you know, the generally federal, I'm reading from their filing. Generally, federal telecommunications law seeks to expedite wireless infrastructure development by limiting local zoning regulations under the Telecommunications Act of 1996. As such, when considering granted location petitions, select boards must consider that Massachusetts and the federal government specifically seek to encourage expedited development and that the TCA, Telecommunications Act prohibits municipalities from taking action that prohibits or delays such development. And the municipalities must issue an order granting location to such projects if development does not disrupt the continued use of the public way. In addition, the FCC issued regulations in September saying basically that the towns have no right to require underground wiring for 5G. They have no right to delay any requests. They could act, the filing could have to be acted upon within 60 or 90 days. Basically, the FCC is a captive of the telecommunications industry, including Verizon. The point of my raising this is that the RFP, or your response to their response, should specifically preclude the duplication of the service to be provided here along that same corridor by 5G. They either have to have, if they're going to have 5G anyway, what's the point of these facilities? If they're going to have these facilities and 5G, we're going to be absolutely overwhelmed in our town. And I don't believe that the report from your consultant even considered that possibility. In short, we need a larger study with more sophisticated engineers to look at, and more sophisticated policy experts to look at what the FCC is doing, what Verizon wants to do, what it's already done in the town of Needham, where it's used this CRAN technology in Needham Center. Needham Center is the exact same situation as Concord. The cell towers lie on the outside, you know, like more than a mile away from the center of Needham. In order to satisfy the town's residents, they have implemented at least five and perhaps they're going to have at least 16 of these stealth facilities on utility poles, which penetrate right into the buildings that are along the way. And Needham is, the town of Needham probably doesn't care about this because it's so overwhelmed by the digital and analog towers that project upward in there and in Needham Heights. So you have to consider all this, and I don't believe your RFP process has considered this. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the federal authority, unfortunately, we do have to obey federal law, and we'll see what happens in that regard. But thank you for that information. We are now ready for the fiscal year 2020 budget discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought I'd just give you a rev overview before the public hearing next week. I think if you look at the logistic transmittal letter, I think the highlights, so if there's any questions for you for next week. So the letter dated February 1st, and it indicates that there's a change in the budget process this year, where our auditors have asked that we allocate all funds, well, general fund money as well as any funds that are made available from the electric fund or the water sewer funds, that they all be shown in the budget. So you'll see that the town government spending is proposed increase at 5.19%, but with transfers, that's a 6.61% increase. Those transfers of the support provided by the electric fund or the water sewer fund support the HR operation, the treasurer's operation, the sort of the general services that are provided throughout the town. In the past, we just showed the general fund expenditures on the enterprise fund expenditures contributing to the general fund operation. So that's a change in the past based on our auditor's recommendations. Let's see, on the next page, under revenues, you'll see the property taxes account for 83.9% of the revenue for our general fund operations. And the impact of the budgets all told, education and town government, the property tax increase is expected to be 3.71% impact on the average taxpayer. Our certified free cash over on the next page, we just received a certification from the Department of Revenue at $11.6 million, or 10.7% of the operating budget, so we're above 10%. We tried to stay in that range of 10 to 12% for many years. Unused levy capacity is at 3.2%, so additional taxation without hitting the levy limit whereby we would need an override to fund our operating budget, so we have 3.2 million. Last year, that was 2.5, so that's an increase in the unused levy capacity year over year. Under the retirement heading, you'll see that as of January 1st, 2018, so about a year ago, our actuary valued our pension at 7.6, 17.3 million of unfunded liability, down from 32 million the previous year. And our funded ratio is 90.5, so we're back up over 90%. We had been in 2007, 2008 before the stock market crash really ate into our earnings, but we're back up over 90% to the pension fund, which is among the highest in the state lengths to the treasurer, soundtreasurers we've had. The, on the next page, town government budget, so there's the increase in spending that the finance committee has allocated, provides the following support. In this budget, the town government operation is within the finance committee's guideline. They provide some salary, a clerk for the town manager's office, full funding of the sustainability director's position, a one new park maintainer, we had requested two, but one is all we could fit. Some funding for White Pond Beach operation, an IT technician, four new firefighters so that the ambulance in West Concord can be staffed around the clock. Right now, it's just from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And as of July 1st, if these funds are approved, the fire department would operate that ambulance 24/7. So we've got two ambulances operating 24/7. The salaries, it's a 2.5% cost of living adjustment, which is consistent with the last three or four years. In addition, employees that aren't at the top of the scale would have another 2.5% step increase if they're entitled to it. The reception is that the town, in the town manager's office, is necessary because we've added significant staff there with the public information officer, the sustainability director, Minuteman Media Network, and others, all requiring service, citizens have interaction with those folks, and someone needs to take messages and assist with the operation. The sustainability director was approved in 2001 annual town meeting, but wasn't built into the budget. So this year, we're permanently building a full salary into the budget. Parks maintainer position is new, that we leave, having the White Pond Beach, a new 18-acre parcel, six of which will be where the beach operation, plus the Jero Park, which we expect to be open at the end of the summer, at least in part. It's going to be a multi-year project, but we think the public will be able to use those two new parks, which are significant in addition to our parks' resources. So we need some additional support.
Would that park manager also oversee any of our other, or would they just be at White Pond and Jero?
They would be general park support. So Ride Out, Ride Out is another area. We made investments and really didn't supplement our park staff, so, and then Anderson Field, wherever the parks department feels the health is needed. Ultimately, I think we'll need a second one to have a team of two folks going around, but at least this is in addition to what the park staff.
They probably won't be handing out tickets on Fairyland, correct?
Correct. That was controversial. White Pond operations, at the special town meeting in October, we requested $30,000 to be appropriated so that we could start the beach operation this coming Memorial Day. And I'm requesting $20,000 consistent with what we said that a year from now, we'll need that money before the season begins to sell beach passes and hire lifeguards before the season actually begins. And I hope that in the third year, it'll be $10,000. Eventually, that appropriation would go away and the beach would become self-supporting. That's the assistant town, our deputy town manager's plan. And she's been pretty good with that type of operation in the past. The IT technician, we, in the past, we've had a librarian and a police officer as the IT technicians for those two departments that have heavy IT load, and it's hard for people with dual responsibilities to both keep up with IT, changes in IT, and be police officers or librarians. So asking those, providing some funding for the IT department, asking you to work on the IT department, reporting to Mark Howell, that will provide services to those two, the library and police department, which will be in augmentation of the services that we currently have. And the four firefighters I mentioned, keynote is that most of the money for those four positions will come from the Muse Stabilization Fund in the first year, the $90,000 is the general fund, and then another 90 from the general fund the following year. In the third year, it'll be another 90. So eventually, the general fund is covering the full cost of the four firefighters.
The police officer who is currently assigned to the middle school, that's a part, that's an ongoing, is that correct?
That's right, yeah. That position was funded as the town meeting authorized in October, with all but $15,000, I think, came from the Muse Stabilization Fund. And then, same thing, that will be diminished over a three- or four-year period, so that eventually the police department budget and the general fund fully support that new school.
You know, the school superintendent said that that has been a big success, having somebody there. I think that's made a big difference. I think that's made a big difference, so.
And I think the police chief agrees that it's been a success. So those are the highlights that you'll hear about, that on the final page of the transmitter letter, you see there's some additional services for the council on aging staff. We're continuing to see the population age, and there's a different demand for services, so we've had, for several years now, we've been increasing support for council on aging in order to offer a variety of programs. And then we have some miscellaneous expenses associated with this inflationary costs. So I couldn't answer any questions, there's a lot more detail, the finance department did a great job once again, in providing a lot of detail about where each and every dollar goes. Those are the new services that are just highlighted.
Gives the finance committee something to do between now and next week.
If you don't, I, in addition to this, when you, if you, I thought I'd ask Kate to come up and talk about the White Pond Beach operation. The rec department has been talking about how that, some people said they're gonna charge what they charge as a private beach operation, it's about three hundred, three hundred fifty dollars per family, and limited the number of families, or charge them lower amount, allow more people to participate, so if you're okay with that, I thought.
I think that'd be great, I just have one question, perhaps, I, in regards to the school meeting budget project, trying to explain the unused levy capacity, the need to have a vote, and perhaps you could explain that, because I don't think I do a very good job when people ask me.
You have a finance director who happens to be here, explain the, I'm happy to do it also, but then you should correct.
Well, I'm glad to see I'm not the only one, though.
I'm Carrie Leflore, the finance director, and if you could just repeat the question you wanted.
An explanation as to the unused levy capacity and why, as I understand, there is a, sort of an urging to have a vote on the school feasibility study, to have the town vote on that in order that, that the funding does not bump against the unused levy capacity, am I correct?
So I, for the definition of the unused levy capacity, I think Carrie's explanation would be clearer than mine, then why don't I tackle, the reason why we would propose a debt exclusion vote on the two school projects, which the warrant does describe to them, motions that we, both of those expenditures should be subject to a debt exclusion, so you okay explaining?
Okay, sure, so the unused levy capacity is the excess property tax that we would have available to use for town operations. Most communities use a hundred percent of their levy capacity, or close to a hundred percent. In Concord, we've been traditionally about five percent below, I think we're probably closer to four and a half percent below now, so we have about four and a half million dollars worth of property tax levy that we could have appropriated at town meeting for any purpose, for any municipal purpose.
Great, thanks, Carrie. So, and just for historical perspective, I think from the year two thousand to two thousand and seven, the town was asked to vote, both operating overrides, because we were right at our proposition two and a half levy limit, the budgets needed to be somewhat higher than that, so both the town and the schools at different times requested spending above the levy limit, and that required an override vote.
It requires the override because of state law, the two, what's called two and a half.
And then, then the economy fell on hard times, and we haven't had an operating budget override since, I think, two thousand and seven. We've had growth in building happening in town, so the levy has grown, and we haven't been spending as quickly as the development has been taking place, so that's the creation of the unused levy capacity. Question that you're being asked is why, if we have unused levy capacity, why would we submit the high school parking lot construction project and the middle school feasibility study to a debt exclusion vote, which is a little different from an operating override? For a debt exclusion, you exclude it from the limit of proposition two and a half, but when the debt is paid off, it goes away. An operating override, you vote, say a hundred thousand dollar higher over, budget over the levy limit, that stays permanently, it's permanently part of your tax, taxation, so the debt exclusion's a little different from an operating override. It has been our practice for major expenditures, particularly for the schools, to have debt exclusion votes, so the new schools, both for design and the construction of all of the new schools, were done through a debt exclusion vote, and so that the unused levy capacity is being reserved for operating budgets, then because you're temporarily increasing taxes to pay for debt, rather than permanently increasing taxes to pay for debt, so that's it.
Thank you, that's helpful. Anybody have questions on the board? I guess White Pond is what we're ready for.
Thanks, Chris, I appreciate that.
Okay, so White Pond is kind of a mystery. So, right, White Pond, the operation will run under the rec revolving account, that's what we're planning on being able to intake the money from, the twenty thousand dollars that's included in the town manager's budget, we would use mostly for facilities maintenance, we wouldn't use it to pay for any services that we have there, personnel costs. We're hoping to be able to generate that through beach sticker sales or parking passes, and, and swimming lessons and other things that we would do there. The plan is to begin selling stickers around March first, but we have committed to the White Pond associates that we would allow a two-week head start for their current pass holders, or past pass holders. There are some non-residents that are included in that list, and so the first conversation that we need to have is if we're gonna allow the non-residents from that list to be able to access beach stickers, then we should likely designate a number, a percentage of the overall beach stickers that we would let any non-resident have. Right now, we're toying with a number between four hundred and five hundred stickers, selling for at least the beginning part of the year, and we can kind of play with that number as time goes on, but at least for our inaugural season, running it as a public bathing beach. We come to that number because it's determined by what's called the capacity limit, so the capacity limit is the square footage of beach area relative to the footage in the swim area. Today, Ryan Kane, who's our recreation director, Ryan Orr, who's our facilities director, and I actually went out to White Pond, we were trying to assess a couple of the things that they have for emergency care out there, and noticed that it was pretty solidly frozen, and the fact that it was sixty degrees out made it really nice, so we went out and actually basically walked what we thought would be the beach area, the swimming beach area, and it seemed like we could actually probably get it to be a bit larger than it was in years past. We're thinking about, you know, about the size, or the length, rather, of BD's swim pool, which would be helpful, so the White Pond associates have some good equipment there, their beach lines, and they're called canons, which are like the buoys that go out along, are in pretty good condition, not enough for the size that we may want to have it, so we'd have to purchase some supplemental things there. The lifeguard stands and other things of that nature, and some of the emergency gear needs to be replaced, but given the fact that we have that year-round at BD, we have some pretty good pricing from, from vendors for that, so that should be relatively easy. Recreation right now is in the midst of hiring all of their summer help, and so in that, we have put a waterfront director position, which would be similar to the head guard position at the BD Swim and Fitness Center, and then the lifeguards. Our goal, really, is to have lifeguard revolving stations, so instead of just having one lifeguard that's stationed at BD, another at White Pond, we have them all under the swim and fitness classification and compensation plan, and we move them from one site to the other. The reason for that is because exterior lifeguarding tends to be a much higher yield for people who want to do it in the summertime. I think people like to tan, so we're trying to spread around the wealth a little bit, so that the folks that are at BD don't feel like they have the lifeguard who doesn't want to be there. So it's helpful if we're able to do two days outside, one day inside type of thing, it's good, and it's probably better health-wise anyway. So then on that, we get to what is basically our capital planning for that. We're really in the beginning stages of that, we used the capital plan that the White Pond associates had done, it was an artistic rendition of that, I think you've seen. In talking just with different vendors that we would have to have to install, you know, a more permanent bathroom facility, seemed like it would be pretty expensive, and Ryan Kane and I are having a hard time rationalizing spending upwards of a couple of million dollars for twelve weeks of bathroom use. And so we have looked at the number of portable restroom facilities, and really found the Taj Mahal of bathrooms on wheels, which essentially come on a trailer, you might have seen them if you attend weddings, and they're at exterior weddings, so they come on a trailer, we can own it, and then we're thinking that we would actually have a decking system that you basically would roll it in, and it would be around, and then facilities and parks every year would kind of build it, the whole thing, so it looks like a permanent structure, but then when we go to winterize it, we essentially can pull it out of where it is and winterize it. The nice thing about that is because it's portable, when we have events like the Jazz Fest, which is prior to the beach opening, and when we have events like the holiday parade, we actually have this traveling restroom, which, which would be interesting, so, in its own way. So that's the first thing that we're trying to nail down, is, is where people would be able to use the facilities, to have some type of changing facility, and then also to have some, some closely accessible handicap parking that's there. So those are the first things, and then the boardwalk system that goes from the existing parking area down to the beach. I would think that that would be phase one. Phase two, which would probably be a fiscal year twenty-one or twenty-two, would be the revamping of the parking lot, better drainage, and hopefully by that time we can work with the state to try to figure out what's going on with the boat launch area there. Short of that, we were able to assess their dock system. It has a carpet on plywood, which we're gonna plan on replacing, but the, the bones that are underneath are actually really good, it's very heavy, they said that they use a crane, or they had used a crane in the past, but actually, we had a different type of scenario in another community that I worked with, where we could actually push it down sort of with a truck and then float it, and it was a nice little team-building activity, where you have fifteen people pushing a two-ton raft out into the, into the pond, so that's what we're gonna try to do, but we are gonna replace the decking on top with either tracks or some type of non-slip, instead of the carpet, because we want to be able to bring it in every couple of weeks and power wash it. Other than that, we are plugging along, we're having an embarrassment of riches for the number of kids who want to be lifeguards, which is great, so I think we're gonna have a really good pool of applicants. And the only other new position that we would be adding would be a gatekeeper type position. That's sort of twofold, one is because we, we hadn't managed it in the past, so I'm not clear whether you have five hundred people that show up all at the same time, or, you know, any, anything like that, so we want to make sure that we're not letting more people in to swim than what the lifeguards can safely watch and what the pond should safely be carrying. So that's the one thing, and the other is, we're still toying with the idea of a day pass, and we'd like to also make sure that the people who are utilizing the beach area and parking there have, have purchased the pass to do so. And now that, that it is gonna be open to the public, that might not be as self-releasing as it was in, in the past, so that's our goal, and going from there, so.
Is the, the bathroom facility discussion, is that, would that be the same kind of conversation we have about Jeroe? Because aren't they both gonna need facilities, would this pricing be different?
Yes, because J- Jeroe has the composting toilets, which is an entirely different animal, but we are not necessarily looking to put composting toilets in at White Pond, because should disaster befall, it's right there on the sand, and.
It's a loading vector, right?
So we're, and it's also going to be probably used more heavily seasonally. The composting toilets are, they're, they're okay, but they, they probably would be able to be used, and they'd be in a building that's heated, I don't think that we would put that much money into a building that's surrounding just the pond area, but Jeroe would be something that theoretically people would be there season-round, so. The other thing with Jeroe is, it goes from about a hundred and fifty-five feet down to a hundred and twenty feet, so we look, we're looking to build the composting toilets basically into the area, so that you have the compost area, which is in the back, it kind of bumps out actually in the ground, and so that helps with the vandalism situation as well, so. They have one at the Concord Country Club, and I, I don't think if you used it, you would know that it was a composting toilet. We got to have a private tour, fascinating.
So I'm wondering, do you have plans for a public visioning session, the way that you did for the Jeroe one?
Yes, yeah, and that's probably gonna be around the first couple of weeks of March. So we have set a price point for stickers somewhere between one thirty-five and one fifty-five for the year. I think we're looking to maybe cut it somewhere in the middle, but as far as that, no other, no other decisions have really been made, so we're, we're looking to get information from, from folks and from the White Pond associates as well. We were kind of waiting until the paperwork and, and things were completed before we started moving along with that, just out of respect for the process, so I'm hoping that's gonna be moving along, and we should be able to do that in March.
And it would be a sticker per family?
Well, that's one of the things we have to talk about, we're thinking it's a sticker per car, so that you purchase the sticker, because the hanging tags are notorious for, let me pass that to my neighbor and my neighbor's neighbor, and I'm not saying anybody here would do that, but I've lived through that in two other communities, and it's miserable. So we were thinking of doing a sticker on the windshield, and then you could get a second sticker for a very low price, maybe ten dollars more or something like that, so that if you purchased it as a household, you would have, for a reasonable price, you'd be able to outfit all of your vehicles, but it would be very difficult to be able to remove that and give it to somebody else.
So Kate, I, I know a lot of good planning has gone into this, and that there will be some learning curve, obviously, as we, town takes on this responsibility. You mentioned you're thinking about four to five hundred tickets, and I'm wondering how that compares to what White Pond has been doing, the number that you're projecting? And, and then the second part of my question is, you also mentioned trying to expand the beach area to the size of the BD pool, and.
The swim, not the beach, the, the swimming area.
Swimming area, okay, good, thank you. So the first question, about the.
Right, so the, the first question.
How does, you're, you're projecting four to five hundred passes, family passes?
White Pond associates told us that in their most lucrative years, they were selling six hundred to seven hundred tickets, or beach passes. I, I don't know what year that was or when that was, I believe they've hovered around three eighty to four hundred and twenty. So we thought, given the price point and the fact that it would be, I think, more publicly known, and we would try to advertise it conservatively, we thought we could get about five hundred. We wouldn't want to saturate it too much over that, because I don't know if all of those people would come every day, and if that's the case, we're selling passes to folks and then turning them away. So we'd rather sell less in the first year while we work out the bugs, and then, you know, be able to notice and see and really manage the bathing pattern that we have going there, weather-dependent, of course.
Yes, it's, it's helpful to know what you're thinking is there, okay, thank you.
At the White Pond Advisory Committee last week, they finalized their set of recommendations for managing not only mostly the swim area, but managing the pond, so I know that they'd be anxious whenever the visioning session or the listening session happens to formally present their recommendations for how to best steward the, the pond, the resource.
Great, we'd be really interested in hearing that.
Great.
So we're looking for a nice sunny summer, huh?
Yes, yeah.
Very good. Any other questions, or? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
I know that a lot of work's gone into. Item seven is to discuss SB eighteen seventeen, an Act to Combat Climate Change. We received a letter from the Chief of Staff for our state senator, Mike Barrett, who has filed his carbon pricing bill, which is an act to combat climate change. He's gotten a number of cosponsors, but it's important that we get as many of those as we can, and I guess we have now a report, so.
Yes, so Kate Hamley, Sustainability Director, you all received the information about the bill, but I just wanted to say that, you know, I know that Senator Barrett's been trying to move forward on a carbon price legislation for a few years now, and a carbon price statewide would definitely help us in Concord achieve our climate goals, so if you all are willing to write a letter of support, I think that'd be great, and I'd be happy to help draft that if it's helpful.
He's been really one of the national leaders, not just Concord, but not even just the state, but nationally, so I think anybody who's interested in this, his office is a great place to, to get information, but we are trying to make sure that people in other communities. But we are trying to make sure that people in other communities do this as well. I had gotten an email, I think from the town, from the Concord Academy student who is gonna be reporting to us in a couple of weeks. And I had heard Turner make sure that her classmates, who live in other state senate districts, contacted their state senators, because it takes a push. This is not something that will happen easily, because it's kind of a whole new, very expansive notion. But my understanding is that the governor is certainly looking seriously at this and favorably about it. Any questions, anybody?
So I would definitely support this. It is definitely in line with our own sustainability goals in Concord and with Article fifty-one, that setting a price of carbon is not a new idea. There are the countries that have been doing this for many years. It will, there's still a long road before this would be approved, but I think it would move us to support this legislation.
We're looking to kind of authorize a letter that I can sign and send.
I can't imagine why we wouldn't move on this and move on quickly.
Anybody else? And I guess we're ready to move the motion.
I move to authorize the chair to sign and transmit a letter of support for S D eighteen seventeen to Senator Barrett and substantially, as we've discussed, as written.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now ready to amend the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee charge. This is largely to extend the duration of the committee. They got a little bit of a late start and they're doing great work now. And the thought would be to extend their term until May of 2020. I don't know if we need any further discussion, but...
No, especially given the news on the monarchs and other flying sick populations. I think it's a good thing to extend. Ready for motion? Right. I move to amend the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee charge as revised. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we are ready to discuss the middle school building project. As people know, this is probably one of the larger items that'll be coming before the, in the town warrant, before the town meeting. And there had been a question regarding the issue of the levy, which as I stated earlier, I didn't fully understand, so I appreciate Chris letting me know, that if we have a town vote, we are gonna have a town election on March twenty-sixth. Obviously, there'd be some savings if we had the levy vote on that same date. The, I think there's some concern that that might not provide sufficient time for a broad public discussion. And I would just state that I have filed disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest as required by General Laws, Chapter two sixty-eight A, twenty-three B three, in that I will be on the ballot as well as a couple of our other visitors here tonight, Terry and Susan, on the March twenty-sixth. And so there might be an appearance of a conflict. I think, given the tentativeness of the issue, I have determined not to recluse myself from the discussion. But if people have questions or concerns, I did wanna disclose that and there's a process for dealing with it. I'm getting kind of, when I talk to people, some feedback that perhaps it makes sense to spend the additional funds that it would take to have a second town vote, which would take place after town meeting. I don't know whether board members have positions or comments on that.
So I just wanna clarify, the example that Chris gave earlier when he was talking about the levy and debt exclusion was not about the middle school. It was about the high school projects, correct? That was the examples you gave?
So all our previous school projects, the elementary schools and the high school have all been funded through debt exclusion votes.
Correct, okay.
So the parking was one of them, which is a high school.
Right, so those two specific examples would be used.
But the feasibility study was the second, correct?
Correct, yeah. They're both, both articles have been written to allow a motion that would make the appropriations subject to a debt exclusion vote. It doesn't have to be moved that way, but it is...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
I'm just, I guess my question is whether or not the town is ready to vote, whether the education level, in terms of the voting population is where it is. I'm a parent of a high school senior, so I'm much clearer on the state of our middle schools and some of the background. But I just, I'm curious as to whether or not in March, I don't know what the school committee, what's going on in terms of the public outreach. And so my concern would be more, would the voting population in Concord know what the limit vote was about at that point?
Can we ask for some opinions from members of the school committee?
I'm very happy with that.
Look like they're here, willing to talk to us.
Yes.
I'm happy to, I'm Heather Vow.
Please, if you would come forward, hop over people and...
Hi guys, Heather Vow, Congressable Committee. Also chairing the CMS Facilities Planning Committee, so I'm very involved with the whole middle school planning process. So in terms of educating, we are actually in the process of putting together a whole schedule of information sessions and forums. We're just finalizing it now and we'll start to publish it to the town. But between now and town meeting, we are planning information, kind of small coffeehouse-style information sessions, as well as larger-style public forums at the auditoriums to educate people about this. Throughout March, we'll have, roughly, we'll have one a week in March, sorry, one a week in February, two a week in March, and two to three in the last week in April, up to town meeting. So that's a combination of middle school and the high school article. In terms of the middle school itself, because you're asking about that, the February information sessions are primarily focused on the middle school, because that's, I think, needs some more education sooner. And the ones in March and April are a mix.
And what is the school committee's thought at this point about when, what a better date would be for March versus...
We have not had a chance to discuss it as a committee, so I can't tell you what the whole committee thinks.
We're talking basically the difference between March twenty-sixth to April eight would be at a time.
Right, exactly. So for us, it's a difference of two weeks of being able to educate people. It's hard for me. I can't give an opinion of the committee. I can tell you that in those last two weeks, we do have a lot of information sessions planned and so that will be a critical time of getting information out. That said, we have a lot planned before that also, which we will be starting to announce.
And because I've heard it being discussed and I can appreciate this as, you know, we're really lucky in Concord to have the schools that we have, especially when, I think it's what, thirty percent, maybe less, twenty-six percent of our population actually has children in schools.
Yeah.
And I know I'm unique here, because I still get fed through the school information channels. And as a select board, we spend a lot of time with all of Concord, whereas as a school committee, the focus is on a different segment of the population. So my concern is...
Getting it to everybody.
Getting it to everybody from a committee that doesn't necessarily always reach everybody.
Yes, and not actually the...
That may not find it even interesting to a lot.
Yes, and it is a big focus of ours, a discussion that we've had also. We wanna make sure that we do get out to everybody. So in terms of publishing our schedule of information events, we're gonna go, in fact, one of the things that I need to do is coordinate with the town. But we would like to coordinate with the town information officer and hopefully get an announcement out through the town email updates that go out. We are, I've already put some announcements out through the League of Women Voters. We will go out through the Journal and for the high school-related articles on mosquitoes as well. So we're gonna be leveraging everything that we can to get word out, not just to the school community, but to the entire community.
Chris, what would be the additional cost of a, sort of a second election, if you will?
Just for your information, if the town does vote to appropriate these funds, Article fourteen and sixteen, subject to debt exclusion vote, you have, the board, select board has to call a special municipal election within ninety days. So you have to do it within a limited period of time. And the cost of a special municipal election, I think, is about ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
And by the way, just to finish my answer to your question on getting the word out, if you have other suggestions of ways to reach the rest of the community, we are all ears and that is absolutely our goal, is to reach the whole community.
Well, are there, since you have the microphone, whether or not anybody gets to hear it tonight or not? Are there any concern, what are your frequently asked questions? Because again, you've been discussing this at school committee meetings, but not at a select board meeting. Here you are. I stay somewhat purposely around the school committee discussions, but I don't know whether my fellow select board members have questions, since you're captive.
About, yeah, about the middle school facilities planning itself?
Yes.
Sure, shoot. Or did you, you're asking, what are the most frequently asked questions?
Well, I was sort of both asking you, do you have that list? Because I think in our conversations, I can imagine some of them would already have come up.
Yes, certainly a lot of questions have come up. I've looked through a lot of them. I can tell you, the, I mean, the primary question really is why now, right? I don't think there's a big question as to, do we need a new middle school building in this town? If you're not sure, come to the tours that we're gonna hold every weekend in February.
I was gonna ask you, I think if you would announce sort of when that's gonna be and how people can attend.
Yes, that's actually, that's what we're about to start announcing, is the tours and the information sessions and everything. So we're gonna open the schools up so that everybody can come through, walk through, see it, feel it, smell it, breathe it, everything. And understand that we really do need a new middle school building. I don't think that's gonna be the big point of pushback, although of course, we're happy to show everybody why and how. The big question is gonna be, why now, why this year? And why not just wait another year, hoping that we get state funding?
Sort of the way, for instance, with Junction Village, we've been turned down twice by, for the tax credits. But we're continuing, and Chris had just signed a letter for number two.
To try again, right. So there are a couple of different reasons that we, that the school committee at this point and the facilities planning committee don't think that that's the most efficient way to move forward. Couple of different factors at play. One is the likelihood of getting accepted into the MSBA pipeline. It continues to get smaller, partially because the number of schools applying continues to increase and the funding level does not. There, in terms of acceptance rates and factors, officially, the MSBA does not look at town economic factors. But we can't help looking at the fact that we, you know, we've had help from them before. There are a lot of other towns out there that do still need their help. We've looked at the survey that they did of two hundred sixteen schools, no, sorry, not two hundred sixteen, almost two hundred schools in Massachusetts in two thousand and sixteen, rating them all. And there are a significant number of schools that are old, outdated and failing like ours are. So in terms of other districts and schools applying for help, there's a lot of competition out there. Now, that's just the likelihood. Set that aside, one of the biggest factors that comes into play is the escalation rate of construction costs right now. And granted, I'll put it out there right now, we're looking at historical rates over the past six to eight years, not the future, obviously. But when you look at the rates and the trends, the costs in construction are escalating at a much faster rate than regular inflation, than availability of funds or anything else, really. So...
We've seen that with NICA.
Exactly. Looking at, so the data that we have is from a survey between, provided by the MSBA, actually, from between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen. The average increase rate of construction cost over that time was six point nine three percent. So we're talking almost seven percent escalation year over year. That's just, it's significantly higher than any other type of inflation or anything that you could talk about. So then you start to look at the size of, the scope of the building that we're talking about. The whole building. Wow, that was impressive. And anyway, if you look at the scope of building that we're talking about, and pushing us out a year, which actually, in terms of building, could push us out two years in terms of opening a new school. So you push out two years and that escalation cost of, even call it five to seven percent, could be up close to fifteen million dollars over two years. So now, you've waited a year to apply for MSBA funding, if we waited a year again. But by doing that, again, it's probably delaying our construction cycle two years, potentially costing us five to fifteen million dollars over that couple of years. So very quickly, oh, and I am even into the fact that there are a lot of systems failing in these buildings. We could have to put money into them. The things at risk of failing are things like the septic system, the plumbing system, the electrical system, the roof is actually getting near its end of life. Those things, when you add up those things, that granted, we will not invest in them, we don't have to. But if they fail, we have to repair them and replace them. We could be talking another potential six million there over the next several years if those things fail. So you put all that together and all of a sudden, the reimbursement money that we could conceivably get from the MSBA by waiting is eaten up really quickly. To the point that we feel like it's not just being impatient to say it's time to sell fund. We feel like it's really the most financially responsible thing to do. Because the risk that we could be waiting and waiting and waiting and therefore spending a lot more money is pretty high. So that's our general conversation and that kind of answers the biggest question and pushback that we had.
So I think the question that I'd like to hear, you don't have to do it tonight, but in these listening sessions, is an understanding of how you forego thirty percent of the cost being offset by the contribution from MSBA against seven percent per year possible cost escalation. That's a lot of years before you make up that thirty percent or more that we would get from the state. I don't wanna, you don't have to answer now, but that would be the question I would add to your list of questions.
Yeah.
When you present it to people. Because it's a significant investment from the state and to forego that, we need a pretty good financial argument that that's worth it.
Yes, exactly. And that's actually what we, when we do these information sessions, we have a whole set of slides that we're working on, I'm ready to share. And that's what it's showing, is building and all that. I will say, other things come into play, like it's a thirty percent reimbursement rate, but our effective reimbursement rate is likely to be lower than that. It'll probably be capped at twenty-five percent tops because of MSBA limits. So for instance, the MSBA specs for a middle school don't include an auditorium. They include a gym that's smaller than what we have now at Sanborn. These are things that, we're not gonna jump to assumptions, but I think there's a good likelihood that Concord is going to demand an auditorium in its middle school. And to be honest, if we're looking at gym and gym size, we would like to also provide a space that can be a community asset. We would like to design a building that has a gym that could be big enough for Concord Recreation to host basketball games there, whereas right now, we can't. So again, those are not things that would make you say, great, we'll give up thirty million dollars just for that. But there are a lot of factors that play in. And that thirty percent reimbursement rate gets smaller, the escalation gets bigger and they actually, those... the escalation gets bigger, and they actually, those, those numbers start to get eaten up really quickly.
That kind of gets to, if you will, my second issue with the, which has to do with, if you don't have the state, if you will, overseeing, the town then needs to play that role. And the question I have is, my understanding is generally, the town has a committee that comes in after a feasibility study. And I'm wondering whether it makes sense to have town personnel and some of the expertise that we have in the town be involved in the feasibility study, so that it becomes really a town community activity rather than a school activity.
It is, actually, so that's, that's the model that it follows. If we, if, if this more article passes at town meeting, the next step is to create a building committee. That's a committee that's created by the town, it's not a supreme committee created entity. It's an entity that's created by the town. So before that, I think we should be talking about, you know, prepare in advance so that we know, okay, if it passes, we're ready to move the next day on. Great, here's our charge that the, that the building committee will have. I mean, I would, I'm, I'm not gonna, again, I'm not speaking for the school committee here, but
Right.
it, it's a committee created by the town of Concord that I would imagine would have select board representation, school committee representation, and various others involved. But it, there's complete oversight from the town because of the fact that the building committee itself is, is town-created, exactly.
And I would expect we'd have somebody, at least a recommendation from the finance committee in terms of, because financing is a big part of any issue, so...
Exactly, we, we've been talking with the finance committee already. A lot of our information is based around numbers that we've been collecting together. I mean, Jared Stanton, our finance director, has been in close touch with Carrie about numbers, and so we're, we're certainly communicating on that front as well.
Well, I do think we need to get the word out for people to come have a look, because I think that nothing opens one's eyes as being able to see what the situation is.
Definitely.
And I, from my point of view, it's not an issue of whether we need to have a new middle school. The issue is sort of how, what is going to be that new middle school, and make sure that we do it in as cost-effective and prudent a way as we can. So, thank you, I know you've been putting a lot of time, your whole committees.
No problem, you're welcome. The other note, just on educating the public one that I didn't mention. In addition to doing the public forums and information sessions, we've also created a list of pretty much all of the groups in town that we can think of that might be interested or might want us to come and educate them. So everything from, you know, Rotary, the League of Women Voters, to the West Concord Advisory Committee, you know, various groups have reached out. We will be reaching out to a lot of stakeholder groups just to offer ourselves up to come and talk and answer questions. But I would guess I would just say publicly too, if there are other groups out there who are interested and would like us to come and, and discuss it, we're happy to kind of, you know, come and share the information and ask questions to whoever is interested.
Well, I think I passed on to Joanna Boynton that Concord can, wants to make sure that the building that is, is going to be proposed is carbon neutral, and so there are lots of different perspectives that come into play.
That's, to be honest, that's one of the advantages of designing a town, is that we can make it carbon neutral. So we'll, we'll certainly be coordinating with Chris.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We are now ready for public comments. Please, you've been very patient, I know.
Hi, I'm Julie Delsbrall, 18 Marcus Farm Road. I'm here about cell towers, not the Concord Center tower, but the Middlesex School Tower. And what I was hoping to do tonight is to share some information with the board tonight, which I'd hope you take a look at, and then I can come back to one of the other. I, I had seen this online, that you have shortened meetings coming up, so it's, you know, sort of far away, let's say the 19th, and I could come to the public comment period at that point and sort of quickly go through that update, and then ask for your help. This looks really worse than it is, I included an entire, like, town report, so it looks very thick, but it's really not so. I promise you. Except for the report, it's quite thin.
You have to promise.
Yeah, I, I, I promise you, so...
There'll be a quiz?
There will be no, yes. There'll be a quiz on the TCA and everything else that you've learned in the meantime. But does that, does that make sense, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I, I, I brought six, because I know Chris wants to talk. If that's okay, I'll leave it with you, but really, that's it.
So why don't you give us a highlight?
So, I mean, you know, honestly, the hi, I, you know, I felt like it was unfair to come, because I know some of you know more than maybe you want to about it, but that some of you might not have the background. So, you know, really, I'm gonna be coming back to really just, you know, look to you for your common good and fairness and compassion to sort of engage the parties in this dispute, bring them to the table so that we can, you know, really resolve it once and for all, because it's been going on, this is the third year. So that is really the highlight. And I guess my other highlight is unlike the Concord Center tower, where someone's gonna have to live near it, that's just not the case at the Middlesex School. So that's what we're hoping for, is a new location, you know, away from the residents.
And this is something that the zoning board of appeals, gone through them, they approved it, and it's now in litigation, is that correct?
Yes.
Anybody have sort of questions or comments they'd like to, before they read all?
Read all?
I think I've, you probably have already sent me some of these.
I know, you've been very generous with your time, so...
When you said that, a request to bring the parties to the table, I, it's in litigation. So what's the, what's the stat, what would the status update be? Is there a...
Well, one of the parties is the ZBI, because clearly, unfortunately, now I'm using my own money to sue my town, you know what I mean, so, you know, it's, there's this weird cyclical argument. But I am absolutely confident that there is a way to easily resolve this, and with your goodwill and, you know, reaching out to Middlesex and the applicant, because again, again, the applicant is a company that they hired to do the sit-in. They don't care where the tower is, they really don't, they just want it to work, you know, and...
They being the applicant, or they being Middlesex?
The applicant. So I just feel like, you know, the town, and I'm looking for you sort of as elective body, to reach out to these parties and saying, you know, this has been going on since, you know, September 2017, can we not get the parties together to resolve this? You know, and that's gonna be my ask, I had hoped that you would see the information first, but that, you know, that is a little preview of where I'm going. Because like I said, there's so much acreage where it would not be, you know, near a house. Because you will see that, I'm gonna be able to see it from inside my house, from every angle. And no one else in Concord has to deal with that, nobody. So it, you know, it impacts me personally, and I have to fight this, so... That's it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make sure.
I'll see you on my 19th. Okay, thank you.
We are now ready for committee liaison report.
So this afternoon, I attended a COA meeting, and they have an associate member's position open, and they anticipate two new full vacancies after town meeting. So if anyone's interested in serving on the COA board, please fill out the green card and make your interest known.
And there's not an age requirement, right?
Right, exactly. The other thing that they talked about is some recent upgrades and classifications for existing staff, and they were most appreciative of that as a board and also as staff in terms of being recognized in the community for the expanding need for serving seniors, and often, as they stated, that the social service entities don't always receive that recognition. So that, that was their position. The other thing I'd like to comment on is that recently, Ashley, Alice, and I attended a session where Tammy Covey outlined sort of her process for following bills from the inception of the initial drafts and when they go on the docket, and, and then the process that they go through getting signed as a bill and then discussed in the various committees and so forth, and I thought that was very helpful. She happened to be at Harvey Wheeler this evening, as I left the COA meeting, and has now has office hours from 6:00 to 7:00 that she's planning on two Monday nights a month at the Harvey Wheeler Center from...
She's gonna be at the Harvey Wheeler, huh?
Yes, in the lounge.
That's fabulous.
Right.
When is that?
Wow.
What are her hours gonna be?
6:00 to 7:00.
I hope they just, some Monday nights that are not 14:00.
Right. Well, I bet I've already expressed that sentiment to her, but I can say that I noticed as I walked out this evening that there were already six or seven people there to meet and discuss with her, so...
Maybe we'll move the 17-year-old vote along a little bit.
I'm not much sure, but I attended a trustees of town donations, and I always understand about, I'm up to about 80% of the financial discussions there, but they were grappling with policies regarding their, how they can expend funds from the trust accounts and an investment policy, both are still ongoing conversations that they're having about long-term strategies for managing the town's many trust accounts.
It turned out, none of the committees I was a liaison for had a meeting since a week ago, so I have nothing to report.
And I have the same, the same quadrant.
Okay, so we are ready for, I see that there is one committee nomination.
Trustee, there you go. All right, so I move to nominate Dave Witherby of 195 Heath Bridge Road to the Sowasco or the Sudbury Aspect Concord River Stewardship Council.
Okay, I guess we don't need anything more than that, so we now have another motion to be ready for.
I move to adjourn.
Wait there a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much.